I'd like to call the November 18th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First order of business is invocation by interim county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberations and grant them wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. As we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, we thank you for all the blessings you have given us. For those to be with family and friends, we ask that you grant them a safe journey in their travels. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen.
Thank you. Our pledge allegiance by Assistant County Manager, Ms. Sherri Slater. If you all rise.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Sheriff Miller for being here tonight. He's our, one of our elected officials that come to our meeting, not just tonight, but every meeting we have. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. We ask all in attendance to please set your cellphone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any item upon which the Board has control of. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is intended to require the Board to, not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the session. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is now in order.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Does any Commissioner have anything to discuss or pull from the consent agenda to discuss later? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Russell, we are now at public comment. Has anyone signed up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No one has signed up for the first public comment period.
All right, we'll move on to general items under item four. Final offer, Ms. Laura Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. On October 21st, the Board accepted an offer from a citizen to purchase a parcel land in the amount of $4,500. The parcel number is referred to as 024-535. It's about .17 of an acre in size and it's a wooded lot. We did, it's located on Conover Street. Public notice was advertised on Jacksonville Daily News allowing other parties to make upset bids. However, during that 10-day time period, we did not receive any upset offers. If the Board approves the property, the property was sold as is and will prepare a detransfer in the property. It is respectfully requested that the Board consider the final offer in the amount of $4,500 for parcel 024-535. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I think B is yours also, isn't it, Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir. Item 4B is consideration of a contract to assist with the sale of the Shell Building. In 2017, the county constructed a 30,000-square-foot pre-engineered metal building, which was referred to as the Shell Building. And the building's located in Lot 22 within the NA Burton Business Industrial Park. The building's currently being marketed by Jacksonville Onslow Economic Development. In an effort to expand the market potential, a request for proposals was issued to solicit commercial broker services to assist with the sale of the building. And the county did receive three proposals. After evaluating the proposals received, it is recommended that the Board consider awarding the contract to Moss, Warwick, Matthews &amp; Company at a commission rate of 5.5% if they sell the property themselves. If Joe had sells the property without assistance from the selected firm, the commission rate would be 2.25%. It is respectfully requested that the Board consider awarding the contract to Moss, Warwick, Matthews &amp; Company as a commercial broker and authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute the contract on behalf of the county. And also, in addition, authorize the interim county manager, Ms. Sharon Russell, to sign the listing agreement on behalf of the county. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. A motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any questions from, for Ms. Jones about this proposal?
Ms. Jones, who sets the listing price for the property?
We actually sent out a request for proposal requiring proposals of the listing price? I'm sorry. That would be Ms. Russell.
So it's a little unusual situation, I guess, because this Board has to agree on the final sale price. So it needs to be listed at a price that this Board can agree to. How are we going to handle that situation?
Vice Chairman, I can certainly talk with each of you individually, or we can talk as a group at an appropriate time at a Board meeting and set that price so that it's at a level that everyone's comfortable with.
I read all of the proposals and I, my only concern was going outside of the county for somebody. But in my opinion, the proposals were, the proposal that you have recommended is the best one that we received and the best price that we received, so.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
Any further? Have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. Jones. Motion carries. Justice Assistant Grant, I think that's Sheriff Miller.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm usually in uniform on Monday, but today was a training day. This is in reference to a Justice Assistance Grant by the United States Department of Justice. We were recently awarded $12,088 from DOJ for the purchase of what they call bulletproof vests, otherwise known as ballistic vests or body armor. The vests will be used for new officers and also to replace the older aging body armor vests. The Board itself approved the grant. Now what we have to do is, this is a procedural issue, to make sure that the Onslow County Sheriff's Office budget is receiving that grant from the general budget so we can do the purchase requests. And this grant does not obligate the county to match the funds. The Sheriff's Office respectfully requests that the Board accept this grant, which the Board has already done, and then also to let the Sheriff's Office budget have that grant so we can make the purchases. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to tell you, I think it's, first of all, I want to commend you for always finding ways to get things, equipment, money, whatever it is, through a grant. I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it's free. But I want people to understand how important it is in law enforcement as far as these vests concerned, because vests have an expiration date on them. And if you're wearing a vest that's outdated and you go into a shooting or anything like that, there's chances are your probability of getting injured is going to be heightened. And so, these are Level 3, correct?
Yes, they are Level 3. We are looking at Level 4. If we can do Level 4, we will certainly do it.
Absolutely. Well, congratulations. I commend you for what you guys are doing.
Insurance safety means a lot.
That's right.
What's the lifespan of those vests?
Mr. Chair, typically about five years. And that involves perspiration and normal breakdown of the material.
For this money, how many vests are, just out of, I'm just curious, how many vests are they? This amount it's going to be able to purchase? Rough amount?
Rachel, I don't have a number for you because, you know, I need to be very accurate.
Okay.
But.
It's a good chunk of change. Good.
We'll certainly let you know about that myself.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Section D Resolution in the new fire districts. Mr. Norman Bryson.
Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chair and Commissioners. The item of the night for your consideration is a resolution and changing of three of our fire district maps. One of those maps is for the Hubert Fire District, the other one is for the White Oak River Fire District, and then the third one, which is a new district, is the Northeast Onslow District. The reason that we're looking at making these changes of these district boundaries is Onslow County purchased the property from Swansboro Volunteer Rescue for the desired purpose of creating a new fire station. That state location is at 3753 Freedom Way. As we're looking in standing that station up, one of the things that has to be done is the approval of the fire district maps by the Board of Commissioners. The first map you have here is the proposed Northeast Onslow Fire District, and there's two colors that you see on this map. The lower dark purple is what was, or currently still is, the Bear Creek Fire District. The top lighter purple is the areas to be taken in that will be part of the Northeast Onslow District. At the very top, you will also see there are several sections that are outlined that will end up being a Class 9E. Part of the reason we're looking at making these changes is a lot of the areas in the northern sections of this district boundaries were a Class 10 or a 9E fire insurance rating. Fire insurance ratings are in reverse order, a Class 10, which means almost like you have no fire district into your area. We're taking, looking at taking in 631 homes that would actually lower insurance values by $915,000 annually collectively across those 631 homes. The other boundaries, which we did, as we created this new boundary, we did take some area from the existing Hubert District as well as the White Oak River District. Part of that was looking at distance from the new station, trying to make sure we have the closest and quickest units responding. This is the proposed Hubert Fire District. This is the proposed White Oak River District, which is covered by the town of Swansboro. Both the town of Swansboro and Hubert have seen these maps. We have had discussions with them, and to this date, they have not voiced any concerns with us. The final map is actually a hash mark showing the areas that we've taken and which areas came out of the Hubert District and the White Oak River. And those gray areas to the north that were Class 10 areas that we'll be able to take in once this fire station is up and running and inspected at least one more time by the Department of Insurance. Gentlemen, if there's any questions I can answer for you, I'm here for them.
The gray area, Norm, what is the current ISO class for those?
Those gray areas are Class 10s.
But they'll be taken in for the lower insurance rate once we get?
Yes, sir. Just to give an example of that, if you'll give me just one second. For, the average home that we are looking in that area is around $175,000. At a Class 10 rating, that means they're spending $4,034 annually. Going to a Class 6 would mean that they're going down to $2,073, which is a difference of $1,961 annually per home at a $75,000 rating. And if you'll forgive me for, Norm, I did forget to read the action in order. As Emergency Services respectfully requesting the Board of County Commissioners reviews the proposed maps and consider approval of the resolution to change the fire district boundaries of the White Oak River, Hubert, and Northeast Onslow Fire Districts and have approved authorize the Chairman to sign the resolution.
Motion to approve. Second.
How many? Go ahead.
How many structures after we, if we approve these maps, how many structures will be left in Onslow County that are still in an ISO rated 10 area?
Sir, that's actually a number I'm going to have to get with you. The last time I saw one, it was around 600. I think, excuse me, around 800. So we're looking at probably being around 200. However, the reason I have to say I would have to look again is there, in the future, we're going to have some more maps come for you because of our construction is happening so much. We have areas that are being built into Class 10.
Right.
So it's a changing number at this moment.
Right. How much of the new station that we will be, the new district for Bear Creek, how many, how many structures are we taking from the Swansboro that Swansboro is currently covering now? So is it going to reduce our coverage area?
It will cut down on some of the area that they have currently. If you'll give me just a second, I do have those numbers with me, sir. Let's see here. There's 319 that are within the five-mile area that are in the existing White Oak River District that we'd be taking in. There was 319, 108, 71. I'd say collectively, we're looking about 800 to 900 homes that we're taking in from the White Oak River District.
Okay. Can you go back to the Hubert, the new Hubert District?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right at the north end of that, the tan shaded area, I see a street called Collinwood Lane. Why is that, is that covered by someone else, Norm?
At the very top end, sir, if I'm not mistaken, that is covered in by what's Maysville now?
Maysville, Belgrade?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's my, any further from the Board? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Debris monitoring, that's yours too, Norm?
After Hurricane Florence, we went through the evaluation of our debris monitoring and hauling. In the last few months, we've actually put out RFP for our debris monitoring. We had seven companies that have come back with RFPs for us from bid. We evaluated those RFPs and have gone through the process and have found that the company, Tetra Tech, was the most responsive to our bids. They had some of the lowest pricing, it was not the absolute lowest pricing, but they were the most responsive in regards to the overall items that we were questioning of the nine areas that we were evaluating. They were also the only company that came back and provided us additional pricing for training in other areas that we had requested. So Emergency Services respectfully requesting the Board of County Commissioners consider approval of the contract with Tetra Tech, Inc., and have approved authorize the Chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Now hear a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will say that I think that company did help us with information that we needed to apply for FEMA reimbursement. So it's good to have experienced people, and if they've experienced here with Onslow County, they kind of know our geographic area, and it's good to have people working that knows our situation. So I think it's a good thing. Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item is resolution accepting Camp Lejeune Joint Land Use Study. That's Mr. Ben Warren.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Camp Lejeune Onslow County Joint Land Use Study. And this project was actually an update to our 2003 Joint Land Use Study. Some of the big things that occurred in this process, when the 2003 Joint Land Use Study was originally presented, that was a time when there was no zoning in place in Onslow County. And so there were a number of very large recommendations that came out of that study that really helped direct the growth throughout the county to the point where we are today. And so, looking at the growth that's occurred over the county, the current land use study itself went back and looked to see where existing development patterns were, to look at the natural landscape, and to see where there was conflicts potentially between the basis mission and the growth that's occurring in our county. And so what we're seeing in the new recommendations are things that many of the projects that the county has already accomplished or are working on, but things such as sharing of water resources, waterway maintenance and navigation, things like vertical obstructions, which the county recently adopted, the ordinance that dealt with windmills and other types of obstructions, looking at our flight path overlay districts and things like that. So a lot of what we have right now are things that are zoning that we have in place or already addressing, but this just further enhances some of those action items or things that we are currently working on or investigating. And so the recommendation this evening would be, or, excuse me, the request would be for the Board of Commissioners to consider adoption of the resolution, accepting the recommendations of the joint land use study, and if approved, authorize the Chairman to sign the document on behalf of the county. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I want to, we already had wind turbine ordinance, already in our ordinance. I think it was last year maybe, or?
Yes, sir.
It was early last year, it was already put in place. So we had that sort of nailed down with that type of energy, clean energy for the county. There was a bill that was introduced by the state to restrict any wind turbines from, I think it was from Onslow County north to Virginia line, all the counties that were within 100 miles of the ocean to restrict that. Did that, do you know what happened to that bill?
I haven't.
I don't know if it just died or what.
I haven't heard.
It was a state bill, but not local.
Yes, sir. I haven't heard any outcomes on that bill. No, sir.
And the, me sitting on the JLU's, you know, committee and study group, everybody was satisfied with what we had done already because it really lays out the guidelines for installation of those structures. So I think even the folks on the military side agreed with what we had done already. But other than that, I think we have a good plan. If the other counties would follow suit with that same plan that we have, there wouldn't be an issue with it anyway.
Yes, sir.
But I'm not, I'm not, you know, part of the state government. But anyway, any further or got any more questions for Mr. Warren? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Ms. Galloway.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. Onslow County provides health insurance to all of our eligible employees by partnering with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina as our third-party administrator. As a self-funded health plan, Blue Cross provides claims administration, medical and pharmacy services for us. And every fiscal year, we review our renewal agreement with them. So the document before you tonight, for your consideration, is that renewal agreement for the fiscal year 1920. There are no significant changes to the terms and services of the agreement. However, there is an increase in the administration fee from $34.30 to $34.97. We respectfully request the Board of Commissioners to consider approval of this renewal agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield for fiscal year 1920 so that we can continue providing health benefits to our eligible employees and would ask that the Chairman is authorized to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Galloway.
Thank you so much.
We don't have anything that moved to the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item six, which is public comment. Have someone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up for the second public comment period this evening.
Okay. I will now move to manager's comment. Ms. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Tonight, for our manager's comments, I wanted to thank you again for allowing me to serve in this role. And also to make an announcement, our Parks and Rec Department had a family campout night that was scheduled for last weekend, but there was kind of some difficult weather that would have made that more of an adventure than had been intended. So they have rescheduled that for this weekend, Friday, November 22nd, at 6:00 PM. It's only $5 per person or $15 per family, up to five. So you may have to leave one of your kids at home to get that deal, but you can do that. And right now, we already have 30 to 40 already registered. So it's going to be very well attended and wanted to let the public know that there's still time to take part in that. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at Commissioner comment. I will refer to Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you, thank you. One of the things that I want to really please with what you're doing so far, sharing with our employees, Sharon and Sherri Slater both carried several of us around. Several of the Commissioners are sitting up here now, went in front of a lot of the employees. And the input we got from the employees, and it was just amazing to me, and it was rewarding to see their concerns. And we answered a lot of their concerns, and if we couldn't answer the concern, we said that the interim county manager would find out for us. But there was a lot of information from the employees, and it was really rewarding for myself and the Commissioners that were with us, Shanahan Foster and Royce Bennett, the Vice Chair. Most of us were around moving throughout the county, and we've been invited to some more stuff, and it's really good for the Commissioners to move around our employees. It really was rewarding to me, and I know it had to be rewarding to them. Besides that, have everybody have a nice evening this evening, safe home and home, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Just to reiterate what Commissioner Buchanan said, it's been great hearing from everybody that works with the county and the willingness to go out and hear what they have to say. And this goes for the community of Onslow County as well. If you've got concerns, share them with us. We'll do everything we can to address those concerns. It may not always be what you're looking for, but understand that someone's listening, and we'll do what we can to support and help not only our employees and everybody with the county, but the citizens of the county as well. And have a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Knapp?
Just a couple of things. First, I want to thank Sherri and the partners in the Oversight Committee for Dick's Crisis Center. We had our meeting with all the municipalities and the private enterprises, and the meeting was, it was long, but it was very, very good and informative, and it's great to see the county entities, city entities, and everybody working together to make this even more of a success than it is and to push forward with it. So thank you to her. Also, thank you, Sharon. The last couple of weeks that you've been on board, I think you've been doing a remarkable job. You're always there to answer our calls and answer our questions and do the research needed and to tell us what you really think in a meeting. So that I appreciate very, very much. Very candid, and I welcome you aboard, and I hope you stay for a very long time.
Thank you very much.
Other thing is, also, I know this may sound small to you, but I want to commend the Sheriff on the grant. I mean, he's looking for ways to save the county money. The vest deal is a big deal, at least to me it is, and to some of the other law enforcement guys, because that could be a lifesaver. And to be able to get a grant from the Department of Justice to pay for those vests, that's huge. Because trying to get money from DOJ is like trying to pull teeth sometimes. But, you know, you know my pain. But you fill out your DAG 71 for seizures or whatever it might be, and then to get these vests, that's commendable. So I want to say I appreciate that. And the last thing, on a personal note, I want to thank everybody in here and people out in G10, people that are watching on the Internet. I just want to thank you on behalf of my wife. My father-in-law passed away a couple of weeks ago. My wife's doing well. She's taking it one day at a time. But all the support that was shown to her is just, I can't even, I can't even comment on it because it was just, it was such an outpouring to her and that everybody showed their concern and love. So I just wanted to say thank you to all those that reached out and to those that are out in G10 world watching this. You have my deepest appreciation. Other than that, thank you for coming. Have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Price?
Yes, the action we took tonight in regard to the Shell Building is based on a desire to move that Shell Building, to put it on the tax rolls. We're getting some tax revenue from that, and hopefully after we move it, we will be out of the Shell Building. out of the shell-building business. But other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shanahan?
So, in addition, in addition to encouraging everybody to participate in the Parks and Recreation campout on Friday evening, I would say go and subscribe to their page, like the page, so you can get the updates. They are doing things regularly and having lots of events, many of them at Anzo Pines Park, but also across the county that you can participate in, and they will continue doing that. It's not just a summertime thing. They are working year-round on behalf of the citizens to make sure that there are opportunities and activities, especially for our youth. And thank you, guys, for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We didn't recognize Mr. Handsome Matthews tonight, but I wanted to thank him for coming up to be here. And ditto Commissioner Price, we're ready to get this, get this shell building out of our inventory and off to somebody else. Appreciate the work that you did in your proposal. Also met last week with the Unmet Needs Committee of Anzo Strong Disaster Recovery Alliance. We're over a year past Florence, and a lot of people have forgotten about the recovery that is still going on in Anzlo County. The Unmet Needs Committee had currently 38 cases that are open. The Disaster Recovery Alliance is a nonprofit group that we put together to help people who fall through the cracks. A lot of people got FEMA money, a lot of people got insurance money, but there's still people out there who have issues with their home, that have storm damage, that they haven't been able to recover from. And Anzo Strong Disaster Recovery Alliance is there to help those people. You can dial 211, County Information 211, and you can get help. Hopefully, we can get you help through the Disaster Recovery Alliance, if you're still suffering out there. Also participated in the Realtor Action Day last week. I got to go out and install smoke detectors with the Red Cross. That was a lot of fun, and we collected food for the soup kitchen. Your Jacksonville Board of Realtors is working hard for the community out here every day. And I wanted to thank the employees of Consolidated Human Services and the vehicle maintenance that I got to meet last week. We enjoyed that time with them. Hope you have a great Thanksgiving. Be careful out there.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to say thank you to our interim county manager. You notice she speaks really softly, but she carries a big stick.
Oh, yeah.
So be on guard for that. We had a meeting, Commissioner Buchanan and Commissioner Price, and I had a meeting with some of the Board of Education folks, or the interim manager, and we're diligently working on a funding mechanism for next year. We don't want to wait till the 11th hour to decide on what the funding will be, and we don't want them to prepare their budget without the county preparing our budget, so we know where everybody's at on the same page. I had a caller, and he's here tonight, Mike Planas is here. Well, I had a call, and me not being an attorney or being in the legal section, he was asking if we could have people to be sworn in, take an oath of office when we have in public hearings, because people have a tendency to come up and, for the lack of a better word, fib, you know, fib to us. Outright lie, maybe. But anyway, I wanted to make sure that we didn't cross any lines, so I would like for our attorney, Mr. DeSimms, to address that issue and tell us what we can and can't do in regards to that. Now, we're not talking about public comment, we're talking about public hearings.
That's right. Mr. Chairman, there's some hearings that boards have that you're allowed to have people sworn in, if they're quasi-judicial, but in the public hearings for zoning requests, things of that nature that come to this board, the statute doesn't permit you to provide an oath. What it does require of this board is to make sure that after they give those comments, that you consider those comments, but you also do your research behind them. So if you have any need to investigate those comments, that would be something that the board would have to do independently. But the public hearings are designed to allow people to come in and to speak freely and to give their opinions.
What bothers me is there's so much bad information out there on the Internet, and people, when they read that information, they take a lot of that information as being truthful, and they could, in effect, come up here and think they're speaking the truth, but really be telling or giving information that's not accurate. So I would be really worried that that would happen, and I don't want to, definitely don't want to infringe on the First Amendment. But that's why I yielded to our legal department, and of course, Mike, we have to, we have to follow, you know, what the legal department tells us we have to do. If we go against that and something happens, then that makes us liable. But anyway. Other than that, have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you all for coming. Have a good evening, be safe driving home. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sumoed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for coming. adjourned.